Good afternoon. We are opening our work session now for August 26th. It looks like we're all in attendance here. I am going to be leading the meeting, but I would like to recognize that our chair is calling in remotely. Catherine, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Chair.
It's good to be here and I look forward to being there in person next Tuesday.
Great. I'm also joined by Commissioner Jason Snyder, Commissioner Nafisa Phi, and Commissioner Jerry Willey. So at this time, we're going to start right in on the SHS one-time funding recommendation for fiscal year 2526. Jess Larson is going to be leading that discussion. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Hello at home, Chair. A pleasure to be with you. This is a brief item, one that you've been tracking along the way about an opportunity to request one-time funding that is available through Metro's admin fund portion of the supportive housing services measure. Next slide, please. Oh, pardon me. I will advance this. And I should also state for the record, Jess Larson, Assistant Director in your Department of Housing Services. All right, here's the next slide. So as you recall, Metro has some unallocated funds from their administrative allowance. The measure allows Metro to 5% of the revenues collected for their purposes in regional coordination and oversight. With those funds, Metro Council previously this spring approved reallocation of about $15 million to Multnomah, well, actually to the city of Portland by way of Multnomah County for some one-time needs that came forward through their budget process this spring. Because of that decision and action, Metro has invited the other counties to make requests for funding through these resources to their Metro Council. And our conversations with Metro staff have indicated that it's important for us to ensure that these funds would be used for one-time needs and based on emergency needs here in our Washington County system. We estimate that about $10 million may be available for Washington County through these resources. Further kind of context for you, back in May, when we presented a quarterly update to your board, we also provided this draft framework, which your board supported as guidance for how we will go forward in the future, prioritizing various one-time needs. So I just wanted to share this with you all in the context that these, this framework was used to prepare this conversation today. You will see this context again when we come before your board for action, for feedback, and then action on our one-time fund investment plan that we will start doing every year once we calculate, we close out the fiscal year and calculate carryover funds. So this conversation is in advance of that process, but nonetheless, this framework was helpful. Thank you for your board's guidance in helping us prepare this request that we may make to Metro. So we have two recommendations that these one-time funds, these potential one-time funds could be used to effectively address urgent needs in Washington County for our homeless services system. The first is regarding eviction prevention. As you may have learned, the state legislature acted in close of their session. In this one, one item was a bit surprising for our community across the state in all of the work being done on eviction prevention in that the state approved a budget that was 60% below previous funding levels for eviction prevention. So this is a significant reduction for the work of eviction prevention here in Washington County. Our partners at Community Action implement this program. It's the Oregon Eviction Diversion and Prevention Fund, and it's shorthand called ORIDAP. And they have been the implementers of this program for quite some time and have received about $3.8 million from these funds previously last year. And you can see some of the stats on how those funds were used, an average of $5,900 of assistance per household to create eviction, to prevent eviction from happening. And that 91% of those served remain stably housed a year later with just that one-time investment. The, the majority of households served were in fact, single moms between ages 25 and 44. So that is the context of our current eviction prevention situation in Washington County. In fact, I should mention on the record that Community Action has had to pause their program. They've taken their hotline off. So right now there are no clear paths to eviction prevention resources in Washington County. This is why this is elevated to our emergency attention, if you will, and why we are recommending this become one of the features we ask, we make request funding for from Metro for these one-time funds. Our goal would be able to restart the program as quickly as possible at the previously funded levels. There is still work underway in statewide advocacy to get the legislature to identify funding, to restore funding to this program long-term, though we would want to take actions here locally to shore up this program in the meantime.
Could you?
Yes.
At this point here, what was our previous funding? It's kind of gone down a couple of, the last couple of years. It used to be pretty big and now it's smaller, but so.
So in addition to ORIDAP, this is an excellent question, Commissioner. You're asking what has Washington County contributed to eviction prevention, which is in addition to the statewide funding for eviction prevention here. During the pandemic, there were additional resources and that funding expired and we used one-time funding from SHS for the past three years to add an additional, I'm going to pause myself and make sure I get this correct, approximately, I believe, $10 million into the system annually. So we significantly scaled up eviction prevention resources for three years because we had those additional resources from one-time funding from SHS. We've been scaling that back over the past year. And what is frankly catastrophic about eviction prevention right now is we did not anticipate that the state legislature would also make this significant reduction.
Is this 60% less than 3.8 million? I think you're saying last, last year, 3.8 million was invested from the state program to Washington County?
Yes.
So 60% of that would, well, the reduction is 40% or 60%?
The reduction is 60%. So I believe Community Action is still waiting for their contract from the state, but I think they're anticipating it to be about $1.5 million per year as opposed to $3.8 million per year.
Wow.
And so how much of our 10 that we're asking for, are we?
Let's let her keep going.
I'm sorry, is that next?
It's coming.
I didn't see it. Okay.
Good question. I'll get, I'll get there. The next recommendation for these one-time funds would be to prioritize some emerging needs in our capital projects for supportive housing service investments underway. These are capital projects that are not traditionally supported with other affordable housing financing. There are things like access centers and transitional housing and shelters where we don't have a robust network of available funding. So we've used those one-time funds from SHS to catalyze these projects and sometimes almost entirely fund their creation. And due to some pretty significant cost inflation in construction, we've been paying attention to considerations like tariffs and other economic conditions underway, these projects have faced some delays and some significant cost increases. So what our proposal would be is to make these, any one-time funding from, for capital projects available only to projects that are currently under contract so that we're not increasing the budgets for projects that are currently under concept, if you will, and only through some further staff evaluation to verify those gaps in their project budgets. So the total draft proposal that we bring before your board today, and here is an answer to your question earlier, Commissioner Willey, is that we would recommend that up to $4 million be used to restore eviction prevention funding to the previously anticipated amount for that ORIDAP program over the next two years because the state legislature acts in a biennium. So we would want to bring it up to that, that state, the previously anticipated funding level for the next two years. And then additionally, up to 6 million for gaps that are identified in projects currently underway. And we would also ask that we consider this with some flexibility because conditions may emerge and which we would come back to your board for direction. Here's a quick slide covering our steps to date and going forward. So first, these recommendations, as I mentioned earlier, were developed based on that framework that you helped to support earlier this spring. Then we brought forward these recommendations to our advisory body, the Homeless Solutions Advisory Council for their feedback and recommendations. It is actually their recommendation that we consider some flexibility in the allocation because conditions may change. And now we're here today with this recommendation for your consideration. And then our next step and the official step is making a request to Metro's council. And Metro staff would like to do that in partnership with us. So we've been in close communication and they are aware of the pending request pending your support and final recommendations and supportive of, of, of what we anticipate to bring forward to the Metro Council. And Metro Councils is just coming back from summer recess and the early conversation, what we're honing in on is an early October council date. So still waiting to schedule that with the Metro colleagues. So our questions for your consideration today is, are these two, the items, the right emergency needs for our community right now? Are there any other emergency needs that are well-suited for one-time funds that's important? We're not increasing, you know, ongoing program capacity because these are one-time resources. And then ultimately, does your board support staff making this request to Metro Council?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there other, are there additional questions that you have? Go ahead.
Thank you, Jess, for your presentation. I think this really demonstrates the success the voters are making into this program. It's saving lives and we see it every time you come to our board to present your work. The question I have is, I thought I heard you say the county's investment into this was about 10 million. And then the draft proposal, you have up to 4 million to restore. So am I to understand that currently it's about 6 million and then to restore, we just need 4 million?
Thank you, Commissioner, for the question. I want to make sure I get this right. It's the ORIDAP program, the state-funded program that is approximately 3.8 million, was previously approximately $3.8 million annually. In addition to that state funding, we, the county, made an additional eviction prevention investment for, with one-time funds for three years with adding approximately $10 million annually into the system to address eviction prevention needs. So if you add those together, it would have been approximately $13.8 million in eviction prevention.
That was in prior years.
In prior, prior years with one-time resources. And we planned to ramp down that capacity because that was elevated during, that funding was in response to elevated funding during COVID and economic conditions in which families could not keep the rent paid, which have since changed. And also, we knew we only had one-time resources. But today's request is about the ongoing funding for the ORIDAP program that we expected to be able to rely on here and have suddenly learned has been significantly reduced.
Okay. Where I'm going with this question is, I see that the next draft proposal is you're recommending up to 6 million to address verified capital budget gaps for eligible projects that qualify. I'm wondering, is, is there a more positive impact if we were to pivot, pivot more towards the first bullet point rather than the second bullet point and really reduce that to maybe 3 million and add 3 million to the top bullet? And what would the, you know, from a, from a saving lives, making sure people don't end up in the streets? What does that prevention strategy looks like? And how do we quantify the number of residents that we could actually keep them in their house as opposed to capital? Because I think we're in a, we're in an interesting time right now to, perhaps we need to hold off of building and really just make sure people are, you know, stable and then maintain what we have. So that's where I'm heading. I don't know if you could shine some light on any, anything you've got percolating in your head.
I appreciate the question and I, I want to assure the board that this is a question that has been weighed and considered both by our staff and the Solutions Council. What we're very mindful of is that these are one-time resources and it's important that we try not, that we create a sustainable system with the resources that we can continue operating, ongoing programs with. And so we are hopeful that eviction prevention resources may find a way to, the state may find a way to increase resources for the eviction prevention program they've previously funded. And so this can act as a stopgap. I think there is value in considering increasing more than the stopgap, even if it is just one-time funding. I do want to mention in something I probably should have flagged on our slides, we, in addition to the, this eviction prevention program, we are about to launch a homeless prevention program, which is a more narrowed focused program that does provide one-time rent assistance resources to households who might lose their housing if they've been previously homeless. So it's a more narrowed focus, but it acts similarly to eviction prevention. And this is intended to be a part of our ongoing homeless services system. So the parts of, if you will, eviction prevention that makes sense for a homeless system to sustain will be permanently or ongoing fund with our SHS resources, whereas the parts of eviction prevention that maybe fall more into the anti-poverty work that usually Community Action agencies manage on behalf of the state, we've let the state, you know, manage the financial responsibilities for that. And, and so that's the ORIDAP program, if you will. But in this circumstance, we feel it is valuable to step in with one-time resources as we have in the past for eviction prevention.
Thank you, Phil. I have follow-up question and then I have one last question, and then I'll move on. So you're comfortable of the two bullet point, 4 million, your, and then the 6 million?
Yes, and, and the third.
That's my follow-up and I'll have final.
Thank you, Commissioner. And with the third bullet point of flexibility, because staff need to do additional work to evaluate the actual capital gaps, I think we would want to see capital projects underway where we've already put investments in to be completed so that they come online to complete the system that we have planned with the resources we have waiting to operate them and so that those resources we've invested so far come to fruition. So we wouldn't want to stall those projects further increasing their costs and delaying the value that the community is waiting for. But as long as we can meet those capital project gaps, then we can flex and maybe add some more resources for eviction prevention. And that is something we would want to bring back to your board for consideration when we have more information, though we're moving quickly because of the urgent need to get some contact in place with Community Action to continue eviction prevention resources if we can.
Thank you. My last question is, four plus six is 10. So is it safe to say you're putting a request to Metro to ask 10 million? And again, I'm heading into the direction of the number of millions that the city of Portland got through, through Multnomah County, but it went to the city of Portland. If, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think that number was 15. So why are we asking 10 rather than 15 here?
Thank you, Commissioner. Your instincts are in alignment with staff. We are asking, we are recommending that we make a request to Metro's council based on the proportionate distribution of supportive housing services measure, which would make Washington County's request about 10 million reflective of the funding split 45% to Multnomah County, 33% to Washington County, and 21% to Clackamas County.
And I cut it down to that. So the pot was 30 million when we started and our third, 30 million is 10 million. That's why we're asking that, whereas Portland's share is larger than a third and they took their one-third of 30 as well. So this is, this is consistent with the IGA formula that we have for allocation of funds to the three counties.
Is that true? Because I think it's 10 million, if the number I crunched last night didn't come up, 10. Is it 10?
The intention is to work backwards from Metro, from Multnomah County's $15 million request. If that is 45% of the program, then our request would be 33%.
You're going to make it proportional?
Yes. It's been unclear how much the pot is, if you will. So we're basing it on the, the decision.
Formula.
30, so yeah, you're, you're correct.
Mr. Snyder.
Yeah. I guess I just share some reservation about the not putting more of this into eviction prevention and I'll tell you why. It's really that 91% number, like that outcome for $5,900 a household, we can't build housing for that. So someone that ends up needing housing because their eviction wasn't prevented, that's a much cheaper preventive strategy than anything else. And if the success rate is really 91%, that's pretty phenomenal for $5,900. From just my view of this. So that's really my only, I don't know if I'd call it concern, feedback, whatever, is that I would want to see us leveraging that as much as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Willie?
It's not, it's more of a comment following behind because in your memo for this slide presentation that was online, you talk about that the 6 million would be allocated, board-approved homeless services capital projects. So I just assumed that we had a couple of projects that were probably going to be underwater because of inflation and costs of construction and all that. So this would be able for us to complete those capital projects and, and bring those online. So my assumption is correct.
That's correct, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, do you have a question? Comment?
Yes, thank you. I don't have any questions. I just have a comment. Thank you very much for this recommendation. I know it's been very thoughtfully put together. I did follow your math of 60% reduction by the state legislature through their budget did yield a reduction of about $2.28 million using just the prior 3.8 million per year. And so I think this is a very prudent recommendation to invest $2 million per year or restore, try and plug that gap that the state legislature has created with this 40% or $4 million total. And I just want to clarify, if the up to $6 million is not fully needed for the capital budget gaps for those projects, just in case, do you feel that this direction allows you to roll the, any remaining dollars into the eviction prevention pot?
Thank you, Chair. That's a very thoughtful and planful question. I, what our plan as, as staff is to do the further due diligence to assess the capital gap. Well, first, to secure these resources through a request to Metro Council and do the due diligence of the capital projects and then also close out our fiscal year and understand our total available one-time funding resources and all of the other needs according to that framework that we've outlined and bring that full package of consideration back to your board. So I actually believe your board is going to have an opportunity to further consider these questions that you're weighing today and if needed, further invest resources in eviction prevention or otherwise at your direction.
And I really do appreciate that in the material you've provided in the packet and presented today, that you've made it very clear that based upon the direction from the Metro Council, this one-time opportunity is for emergency needs as well as one-time uses as well. So thank you for clarifying that. I do support the proposal and look forward to your receiving thumbs up from Metro Council. Thank you. That's it from me.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to concur with everyone here. I appreciate the work that's been done. I appreciate you protecting our investments on the capital side as we move forward. I think that's an important piece here. And while I understand exactly what Commissioner Snyder was saying about the, the, the cost benefit to eviction protect, or prevention is really important to you, but we, we need to balance those two and I trust that you have come to that balance point. So may I ask if there are thumbs up on bringing, the staff bringing this forward to Metro Council? Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alrighty, we are now moving to item two on our agenda, which is the Commercial Property Assessment Clean Energy Program. This is CPACE, the program extension options and staff recommendations. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Stephen Roberts. I'm the Land, Use and Transportation Department Director and I'm joined by Adrienne Chalet, who's our Economic Development Manager, recently moved to LUT and we're so excited to have her. And so we wanted to just come back and give you a quick update on the status of the CPACE program. So we're proposing a little bit of a pivot. You've all received a memo some time ago. That memo is attached in the work session packet materials today, along with a short addendum as well with some additional updated information. So we really just want to walk you through our thinking on this, our recommendation for this ordinance and the program going forward. And then be sure to help answer any questions that you have before this comes back to you for action on the ordinance itself next week on September 2nd.
Great, thank you.
And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Adrienne. She's going to walk us through the presentation and then again, we'll both be ready to answer any questions.
Thank you, Stephen. Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Adrienne Chalet, Economic Development Manager. And we're excited to be back with some additional information for you regarding the CPACE program. We did complete the program assessment and you will see the results of that threaded throughout this presentation. So today's briefing will include a review and discussion of the various options that we have identified based on the findings of our assessment recently completed. And then we hope to receive board direction on the disposition of ordinance number 906, which would, as it is filed now, sunset the CPACE program prior to its current codified December 31st, 2025 sunset date. The questions we have for you today are, do you support our recommendation to extend the sunset date of the CPACE program either to December 31st, 2026, as you saw in your memo, requiring a program assessment report no later than June 30th of 2026, or indefinitely and require an annual program assessment report no later than June 30th of each year, which would minimize us coming back to you sooner than later? And also, we're curious what additional information would be helpful to inform your future deliberations regarding the program? So this slide is probably very familiar to you now, the CPACE overview. It is a real estate finance program incentivizing clean energy investments and the goal is to build resiliency and sustainability of the built environment. Acting like an assessment, a property lien is recorded and a loan is paid back to the lender over time. All types of commercial properties, both for-profit and nonprofit, are eligible. This gives you an overview of prior board action. Most recently, June 3rd, we conducted the second reading and first public hearing whereby we requested a continuation to next week, September 2nd, to make a decision on whether to adopt or reject the ordinance number 906. A reminder of the program assessment and sunset provisions. So we did complete the required program assessment, June 26. So we did complete the required program assessment, June 30th. And today we'll talk a little bit about the findings that we have discovered through that process. So two of the projects completed to date, the first being retroactive recapitalization of a 90-room hotel located in the city of Beaverton, which included increased energy efficiency and HVAC systems, windows and doors, lighting, siding, insulation, pretty extensive upgrade. And then the second being a self-storage building located in the city of Hillsborough. Finance improvements included also energy efficiency seismic rehabilitation and an upgraded HVAC system. One big piece of our analysis was to understand the program costs and potential revenue to understand if we had met, you know, the expectations of covering the startup costs, which were approximately $26,000. We calculated in partnership with county council that this was around 23 hours of staff time per project. And with the application fee, essentially, we have identified that 90% of program startup costs have already been recouped through the two application fees to date. And looking forward, we are hopeful, based on the level of interest and projects that are in the pipeline, really picking up in the last few months, that they, these project fees could meet or exceed the cost of administering the program. So one core piece to our assessment, as you've seen, was engagement with various stakeholders who had also reached out to your board. And then folks who had been involved in the inception of the program as well. We've also reached out to other program administrators across both the region and the country just to understand what are some opportunities to really respond to the levels of interest in the community. And one of the opportunities we have identified is that there's a real, real chance to increase awareness through education and outreach to developer and property owners, as well as partner with our local jurisdictions. And in addition, similar to Multnomah County, they have worked very closely with groups like Energy Trust of Oregon to provide more detail for how these projects could meet public benefit expectations. So one option is for us to establish clear program criteria and objectives that encourage specific types of projects. So a reminder, ordinance number 906, as filed, would sunset the county CPACE program prior to the original December 31st, 2025 sunset date. However, since the filing of ordinance number 906, we have conducted this assessment as required and have identified these opportunities where we see a real potential for the program. We have also received an increase in developer interest and awareness. And so therefore have created these different program scenarios. The first being to adopt the ordinance and end early. The rest are to reject ordinance 906, but I will, I will hone in on our specific staff recommendation, which is number four, to extend the CPACE program and enhance, considering the additional capacity and support that I have now on the land use and transportation team. And so we have done quite a bit of research, understanding what pathways we could take in enhancing the program. So the two options within this option is, and we hope we made it as clear as possible in your memo, was to extend the program to December 31st, 2026, or extend indefinitely. So this is our recommendation. Your decision will be next week, today's deliberations only, but to reject ordinance number 906 and direct staff to file a new ordinance amending county code to continue the CPACE program with those two different sunset provision dates optional. And then as you see the programming enhancement below, we're hoping to develop a more robust outreach plan. So next steps, pending board direction, staff will draft and file a new ordinance and schedule required readings and public hearing. There is a time sensitivity, so we would need to adopt no later than your November 18th, 2025 meeting due to the upcoming sunset date. All right, so here we would just re-present these questions to you. If you have any questions, we welcome them, or is there any additional information that would be helpful to inform your future deliberations regarding this program?
Great, thank you. I'll ask for questions, but before we ask around the table, I see the Chair has her hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you. I understand that we're going to have to take an action per your recommendation to change the, the sunset date in some way. Do we have to provide you direction today on doing A or B? Or do we have until a future date to do that?
Chair, that's a great question. We would love to get your feedback and direction today. I think that would just give us some additional certainty about the path that we're going down. However, where we would really need your formal direction on this issue would be at your September 2nd meeting.
That's what I needed to know. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Are there other questions? Commissioner Snyder?
Just for context, if I'm remembering back over the last year, like we're, we're having this discussion, I think, because originally staff came with a proposal to, to end this program, right? Now that recommendation is changing. I think there was both community concern about doing that and we were, some of us were kind of questioning why the program wasn't, you know, was it really not successful? If not, why not? Like just general questions around that. What I'm, I just want to make sure I'm tracking here. You now all have done a more thorough assessment and concluded it is a reasonable program. It's paying for itself or better and that it's a valuable tool for the community to have. And so this, instead of eliminating the program, now the recommendation is one of these two things. Am I tracking that right?
Perfect.
Okay, I mean, it just.
It is, yes. It is unusual. We, we came to you initially based on a pretty preliminary assessment of the program. In looking into it further, we identified, actually, this does look like it's pretty workable from our perspective. And then I think as Adrienne alluded to, we'd had two programs over two years. So it just seemed like it wasn't generating a lot of interest, but just literally within weeks of having gotten direction from your board to start the process of sunsetting the program even early, we suddenly started getting a big uptick of interest in the program. And so maybe it's one of those things where sometimes until it's under threat, you don't realize.
Yeah, there's nothing to drive demand, like the possibility of the program going away.
Right. So, yeah, and we, and Adrienne could give more details, but I know we've had probably five or so pretty substantial potential project inquiries here, just since we initially talked to your board about this in February. So none of those have materialized yet, but I think we've got a couple that are.
Yes.
As if they are likely, likely going forward.
Correct.
So I think we should, I mean, my perspective is we should keep, try to keep the program. And I, of these two options, I think the indefinitely with reassessment makes more sense to me, just given what we're talking about. But I could be persuaded otherwise.
Other other comments, questions?
Yeah, I would agree with Jason on the B. It would be my option too, just because we don't have to redo this process again next year. But we do, I do like the program assessment on June 30th every year. So that's just, that would be my recommendation as well, that we leave this indefinite, have the program assessment in early on June 30th.
Commissioner Feig.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I'm glad to question Commissioner Snyder asked around the details of why the staff is pivoting towards this direction now. Because I learned a lot in that conversation. Over the weekend and last night, when I was reviewing this material, I honestly said to myself, I don't think I know enough, even going back to the memo, enough to really make a decision on which way to go, because I don't think, I didn't see. I know you said, Adrian, that you have more support now that you're with LUT department. But I didn't get that, the material that was presented. So I don't really know what the cost implications are. And, and I think the, the main problem when you all presented the recommendation around sunsetting this program was around the lack of outreach and the lack of outreach, meaning there's no money to invest into outreach, to recruit. I know people have raised their hands now. And I think we had a light moment here reflecting back. But I think it was, I, I don't know if it was Commissioner Snyder or Commissioner Willie. I had a really great meeting with some of the advocates, two people that were advocating keeping this program. Was like you or you was one of the gentlemen here. So it, I, and they convinced me the need, why there is actually a critical need out there. But I'm not sure I understand. I, I don't know how we make a informed decision here without knowing what the cost implications are to the county and what this means for next year and how we're gonna, is this going to come from a one-time fund? Is this a SIP dollar we're going to pivot? Like what is happening here for me to make an informed decision to say, I rather, I support one or B, because both A and B are vetted by you as the subject matter experts. And I'm comfortable to follow your lead, but as to pick as one or the other, it's really hard to do without knowing that the economics impact for the county. And, and, and what does that mean when Adrian says, now I have help?
So could you also review, as per Commissioner Feig's request, what the process for paying for this program is, that it comes from fees?
Right. Yeah, so that's really been our assessment, is that after going back and actual, the preliminary assessment, we hadn't gone through the exercise of actually cataloging hours and, and tracking actual expenditures relative to the program income.
You have it here, actually, program. Cost is a 26 and you got 30, and then there's a 3,300. So I see it here, the breakdown of.
Yeah, it wasn't systems prior, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the implication, is that the, the program should pay for itself, like it should not need any additional support. And I think to Adrienne's comment about more support in LUT, it just means that we've got administrative and other supports that can help her out with processing the applications, whereas before she was kind of a one-person show with a little bit of financial support. And so just being in a bigger team has given us opportunities to draw other folks in to help support her role in this work. And to be honest, I believe that in a worst-case scenario where the economic development manager position is no longer funded in the future, I believe we still have some staff capacity, given that these are not super frequent and don't consume a huge amount of time, that I think we probably, even within the department, could continue to have the program function at a very minimal level. Now, having the economic development position will give us the capacity and bandwidth to go out and do actual outreach and recruitment and talking to people about it. On, in another scenario, without that level of staff support, it would be much more of a responsive role. If someone approached us with an application, we would say, yes, we can process that application for you. So, so kind of at that minimal level.
Thank you. I, I see Chair's hand, but before we move to her question, I just want to make sure that people here and in the, in our audience understand that there is no use of one-time funds. There is no use of SIP funds. I just want to clarify that, to make sure.
There's no use of any other revenue other than the application.
But since those two were brought up, I just wanted to underscore that this is a fee-based, fee-based program.
Right.
With that, and I have one more comment, but Catherine, Chair, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to share my thinking behind this. I appreciate the memo updates that staff has provided to the full board that includes, included the offer of one-on-ones for any presentation of the information, questions and so forth. And I appreciated that because I learned some of the fine points on this topic. I really like the opportunity of your, the recommendation of not just ceasing the program at the end of this calendar year 2025, because of the opportunity for further engagement. And this is the kind of program that will help ensure that development that can invest more in the energy and climate resiliency and seismic resiliency of these, of buildings, either new or existing, is, is done right here in our communities. We need that. But as I've thought about this, I thought about, well, what if the applications don't come in? You talk about that on slide eight. Well, you talk about applications covering the cost, but that's as long as they are the applications. So I thought a little bit further about that. And that includes feeling the burden of our having to continue to pull back on services. But ultimately, here's where it leads. At first, I was concerned about the option B indefinitely, because I thought that felt like the funding solution may be below the board's radar. But I think we've done a pretty good job as a board majority of ensuring that we do feel educated and know year over year how programs are being funded. So it's just a reminder for myself that the budget is reviewed every year. And we review the state of affairs with those funding sources. So where I'm at is, I do want to continue, but I'm not quite sure if I want to go with the indefinite, given our practice, or if option A, that sunset to December 31st, 2026. I think I'm leaning more towards the indefinite, but I want to make sure that the future board knows that this is not a mandatory program. It's an optional program paid for fees, paid with fees, and that this is one of those options where if interest ramps down and we don't have the staff capacity to continue with the program, then we'll have to cease the program. So I think what I'm doing is convincing myself to lean into indefinite and to continue to support our management practices of due diligence as we have now. So those are my thoughts to the board and to staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. My, my comments are that, first of all, I'm reflecting on the fact that I believe it was my work with Brenner Daniels and his group that brought the CPACE program to us in the first place. And so I've been a big proponent of this all along. I was disappointed when we looked at stopping it. So thank you for the work that you did and the further investigation to determine the, the viability, if you will, of the program. That said, I, I support definite, I support the extension of the sunset date. I am looking at B versus A for the same reasons that everybody else talked about. With the assessment, the one concern that is buzzing around my head is with our federal administration view on clean energy issues. I'm not certain what impact that might have on future lenders. So I want to make sure that we have that program assessment and we can anticipate potential loss of application from that angle, not just lack of interest in our community. But that said, I, I support economic development tools. We need to have a strong basis here in Washington County. And this is, this is one piece that we can add to the toolbox that we talk about locally and statewide. So thank you for working on this.
I feel like with what everybody said, there may be a little upgrade to be that might make it more clear for the board and more comfortable. And that would be that the program needs to be paying for itself and self-sustaining. And if it's not, because there either aren't applications or our costs go up and the fees go down, or we're just spending money and never having an application ever, then to me that, I assume the management practices discussion we're talking about would mean that would come back to us, but maybe it should just be in our direction.
You know, that's what I read in the program assessment report, but to delineate that further would not be a bad thing.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll approve it indefinitely as long as it's doing those things.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's embedded and, and I, and we can be clear when we come back that in the evaluation criteria, that it's clear that part of that would be the financial feasibility, both sort of looking back and looking forward. And this is maybe to help reassure, because I really appreciate this whole line of discussion has been really good for us too. And so I want to reassure folks that this is, because it's such a limited amount of work, this doesn't involve any additional dedicated FTE. This is a, this is a thing that existing staff members can pick up. And that's how the program would continue to operate. So we're not going to be relying on this funding for the people. However, it appears that the fees that generated by this will more than pay for the staff time that would be needed in order to keep the program going. And we probably could have said it explicitly, but certainly under option B, you always, as a board, have the opportunity to end a program at any time. And so as, as we're doing, let's say, the annual assessments, if we go with the indefinite route, we'll be, we'll have that opportunity each year to have a discussion with your board about whether it makes sense to continue the program or to go ahead and pull the plug for any number of reasons that we can't anticipate today.
Was everyone comfortable? And Commissioner Snyder, are you comfortable with that explanation? Thumbs up? Thumbs up. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
As I said earlier, thank you for really taking a hard look at this. Much appreciated. Alrighty, we are ahead of schedule here. My, Catherine is clapping. Kevin, do you have recommendations? We can go to item four.
So Madam Vice Chair, you can go to option three. You have Mr. Joe Nelson and you have Assistant Commissioner Marty Kyle in the room to present the item.
Okay, if you're ready to go, that means we've got 60 minutes allotted to that, that piece. So that would take us past what we were considering a break time. But are, are we all comfortable with that?
As long as we don't go an hour and a half.
Yes, I agree.
Without the break.
Did you, so, so you had an early warning on the key?
Well, or we just take a break in the middle.
There you go.
No, that's not ideal, but.
I get it.
And I think, I think we allotted 60 minutes to give you plenty of time to discuss the item, but.
Great.
Good afternoon.
So we were, if I could just introduce for everybody, we are on item four. And this is the museum, the Washington County Museum, Five Oaks Museum formerly, and what the initial directions are. And we're joined by Marnie Kyle and Joe Nelson. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair, Trace and Board. Marnie Kyle, I'm one of the Assistant County Administrators. And I'm going to turn it over to Joe pretty quickly, but just wanted to say thank you to each of you for the one-on-one time, because this is a very complex item. And we, staff has done a tremendous amount of work and really been creative in trying to explore what are some different options to bring to your board? And I would say that we recognize we are not bringing to you an option that is easy. All four of these options that we're going to discuss have benefits and challenges. And we just want to appreciate that this is a tough conversation. And we are happy to go back and do more research, get more information, but are really looking forward today to some guidance on narrowing the options for us so that we can really dig in and move forward with this. Because I think that's best for everyone in the community to have a better idea of what's going to happen with these museum artifacts. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Nelson and he will walk us through.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Joe Nelson. I'm the Director of Assessment, Taxation, Records and Elections. And as you mentioned earlier, this is the museum topic. The agenda today, we're going to talk about action requested. Thank you. Thank you.
I can be useful.
So the second thing is after action requested is the museum closure timeline. We're going to talk about project scope, the documents and records, options for the board consideration, and we'll conclude with time for questions. Next. The action requested is which option does the board want to direct staff to pursue? Similar to what Marnie, Ms. Kyle just mentioned. And the second part would, would be, does your board need additional information to make a final decision? I'm sure everybody is at the same point for this discussion. I want to take a minute and just bring us up historically to where we're at. In December of 2024, Five Oaks Museum notified Washington County that they had inadequate funds for continued operations. As of December 29th, 24, the museum closed and they have not reopened since. This board received a status update as of February 18th, 2025 from our team. As of April 7th, 2025, Washington County terminated the agreement with the Five Oaks Museum and the collection reverted to Washington County. Ownership and possession. Again, we provided a status update May 13th of 2025. And currently, the collection and facilities are safe, secure with appropriate environmental condition. And additionally, I'd like to add that the museum software, PassPerfect, has been upgraded and is ready for operations. As you're aware, this museum project was unplanned by Washington County. It was not budgeted and is, as we're discovering, very expensive. We find ourselves in a position of stewardship for the collection. The land is owned by Portland Community College. The facility is under agreement with Portland Community College to expire June 30th, 2028. And it needs to be operated as a museum, otherwise it reverses back to Portland Community College. There are two major pieces to the collection. There's the records, which is paper, photos and books, and the physical artifacts. The records have 1,115 cubic feet and the physical artifacts have 19,249 cubic feet. There's a little bit of a, an example I wanted to give. People are asking, what is a cubic foot? We have a one-foot cubic box. So it'd take 1,115 of these just for the paper record and 19,249 of these for the physical artifacts. A colleague of mine, Brenda Bartlett, came up with a brilliant way of actually demonstrating what that really looks like. You go to the next slide, please. He wrote it as a raised garden. And in this example, there are four cubes wide, four cubes deep, 16 cubic feet in total. So if you're looking at 1,115 paper records, you're talking 63 of these raised gardens. If you think about a buildable lot, that would pretty much take a buildable lot just for the paper records. If you're talking 19,249 physical artifact records, you're talking 1,200, over 1,200 raised gardens. You're talking a commercial, professional nursery. This is a massive project. It's going to take a massive amount just to change it from the physical inventory to what are these items? You have to inventory these items. And they're intertwined with historical significance. And it's, it's going to take a lot of time. It's going to take a lot of work just to inventory it. I'd like to take a minute just to talk about the documents and records. These documents and records, Washington County already has documents and records. We're good at that. We do that. We have a records department. The records for the museum would be part of that. We would retain, we would store these records regardless of these other options. So when we're talking about some of these options that we're talking about, we're talking about the physical artifacts. To define what kind of records the county currently does, county has administrative records. And these administrative records typically are business records subject to public records requests. Sometimes there may be confidential records, but it's typically records like court minutes, court records, contracts, communications, maybe department records like tax records, health records, housing, land use facilities, lots of different types of administrative records. That's what we currently have. Conversely, the museum has historic museum records. These records are for research and exhibition purposes. Examples of these may be documents that have historic value, photos, maps, Native American history, cemetery records, journals, letters, transcriptions. That type of record is a historic museum record. The four options that we're bringing forth for the physical artifacts are option one, deaccession. Option two, surplus. Option three, imaging and research center. And option four, reconstitute the museum. I'd like to talk about each one of these individually. Next one, please. Option one, deaccession. The purpose of deaccession is the disposition of the physical artifacts. As I mentioned earlier, the paper records, we would maintain according to legal retention standards. The key about deaccession is the disposition is to museum standards. It's the highest standard. And we determined to do this, it would take five full-time employees, five years at a million dollars a year. And for accounting purposes, we would add the cost allocation plan as well each year. We'd still have the cost of storage, these doc, for these documents. We'd still have to do the timely and costly inventory for these artifacts. We'd have facilities and maintenance and we'd have the disposition logistics to find these, a new home for these artifacts. Next. Surplus is another option, option two. It's very, very similar. However, the main difference between surplus and the accession is this surplus is under government asset standards. It's a different set of standards. To do this option, it would take three years, three employees, a million dollars here, and again, the cost allocation plan. Everything else is very similar to it because we'd still be storing the records. We'd still have to inventory the, these artifacts. And we would still have facilities and maintenance operations and the disposition logistics. So option one and option two are very similar with the difference of about, first option one was five million over the five years. Option two is three million over the three years.
This distinction you're making is really in the standard, like the how careful and like, can you, I think for the public's purposes, it'd be helpful for them to understand a little bit more about this, the difference in the standards and care with which things might be done at museum standards versus let's dispose of it at sort of using government surplus approach, which is, I think, from what I've gathered, not as careful? Is that how you would describe it or how? I think you do need to make that clear to the public right now.
Certainly, certainly. The government asset standards, when you're talking about items, assets, tables, chairs, it's finding new places, perhaps somebody would come in and purchase them in bulk. They would find different businesses and so forth. And, and actually that's with finance departments. So I've had several meetings with colleague Susie Foltzer, who would actually be the, the manager of that. And she kind of gave me a rundown. So I'm not an expert on surplus. But she gave me a rundown of, an example of some of the county surplus thing that they've had. She was, this is a big project for her. She was a little bit concerned over how big this project was. And that's why she was talking about the three-person team, one million a year. When we're talking about deaccession, that's the big one. That's where we'd have to work with the state. They'd talk about the different standards and the care. When we're talking to some of the museum folks, how they, how they handle these with gloves, certain items, how they package it, how they ship it, and who it goes to, the amount of care in the inventory about the keeping the history and the written documentation with these. There's, it's a huge undertaking to do deaccession. It's very, very detailed. And Marnie, do you have anything to add?
No, I, I think that was a good explanation. I, I think the biggest difference is that last bullet, the disposition logistics. Because whether it's deaccession or surplus, we still have to do the inventory of the artifacts. And we still have to understand the significance of the artifacts and does somebody own them? Are they, are they Native American? Do they have importance in the Native American community? So we still have to go through those steps. So that's why it's still a three-year process. It's, it's just a difference. And then the disposition of the artifacts could, could be different after we've gone through those first steps. I don't know if that helps, but.
Go ahead, Chair. You're on mute.
Thank you. I think the key is the kind of people involved in the work and the time involved. You're, it's very clear. You've talked about, you know, the storage, the inventory, the facility maintenance and the disposition logistics are very similar. But that difference between the handling of materials from museum standards and government asset standards are quite different. You know, the government asset standards let you treat things like things and the people who, who buy them accept them in that state. So it really, it's, it's a matter of, frankly, it boils down to what we think we can take on over the timeframe and meeting that. And you're being very clear with us that there is a difference of standard of handling in each of these two options and that there is a time difference as well. But thank you for, for the clarification on the, the asset handling. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I have a question, Joe.
Yes.
Am I understanding also that between the two options thus far, regardless of which standards, there's also by legally, there will be some artifacts that we have to retain, Washington County.
Washington County will retain the paper records, the photos, the documents, all, everything that's the first 1,115 feet, cubic feet. We save those. We do have to keep those. So what we're talking about with these first two options is just three-dimensional artifacts.
And none of that we have to legally keep?
No, we do not.
Okay.
Let's move forward to option three.
Now, option three is concept of that imaging and research center is the concept where Washington County would own and maintain ownership and operation of the museum, the whole, the whole collection. The concept originated when we were thinking about different operations that we had within the county. We have an imaging center that has complementary, perhaps symbiotic or multi-beneficiary, beneficial processes to the museum. It's an existing county function. It's a scanning center basically with lots of different equipment in there. And they turn paper records or images of items into electronic images. It puts it out access on, on the web. It's a lot less expensive and it's very convenient, obviously. The concept of option three would relocate the county archivist in the five-person team from a small space on the second floor, behind a locked door. It's, it's a very confidential location out to the museum along with the addition of one museum specialist. We'd have to add one FTE as. Along with the addition of one museum specialist, we'd have to add one FTE as museum specialist. This team would then constitute a research center. It would not be a museum anymore. But it would minimize the cost for the county, preserve the collection, and it provides public access this way. But it's a research center at this point and an image center with images online. Couple of items there that save us money is these paper records, we would not be paying storage for them at this point. They would stay undisturbed out at the, that museum location. So we'd not be paying storage for that. We would have to be paying for facilities, the maintenance, the operations. There is a offset that's a specialty fund, but it is for storage and retrieval systems for the imaging center. So there's, like I said, it's, it's a partially mutually beneficial situation, complimentary, but is the special fund is for the imaging center.
Can you comment on what the public access, you, you say public access to the collection? Can you comment on what exactly that means?
Certainly. We could have, and this is still in conceptual form, where we'd have a entrance. We perhaps have a, maybe a few tables set up. We'd have this FTE that's a museum specialist. They'd help whoever came through the door, might be PCC students or the public in general. They'd, I'd like to see these paper documents, maps, we'd like to see this artifact, whatever it is, they would assist in, in the collection, maintaining the collection and the viewing and the research.
So the whole thing would still be accessible to the public?
Public.
The, the domain of what's in the library now.
That's correct.
Museum, I want to call it a library, but it's a museum.
Yeah, the museum previously offered access for research purposes. So they had a room where, where people could go, students or the public to research a specific document or item or study that they were doing, educational study. The difference is that, that's the only service we would offer. We would not.
Longer exhibits.
Right, exactly. Right. So it would be limited to research.
Where I want to look, I want to look at a thing.
Yes.
Or a document or a photo or a whatever.
Yep. And I would say at this point too, that we have not connect, we haven't gone back to PCC and verified that this would be a use that would, that they would approve. We wanted to talk with your board first, so we would need to go back and work with PCC to see if that, if this meets the, the facility standards that they're looking for, so that we could continue to lease at a low cost.
Chair.
Thank you for the answer to Commissioner Snyder's question. I am trying to make sure I'm clear on what's accessible in this option. You've made it very clear to me that there are artifacts and then there are documents and records. So what I understand from this is that the documents and records would certainly be available. You're being clear that you'd be able to go through the inventory process for the artifacts. But my question is, are you, what's happening to the rest of the artifacts? Cause it says here artifacts reduce collection to items with historical significance. So are we just kind of taking a pause on, on dispositioning of the artifacts and taking through option three, taking some time to just go through inventory in option three?
That's a really good question. And that's some of the questions that we were trying to determine. So when we were talking to the prior museum staff, they, over the last few years, had been kind of scaling the collection based on priority, based on historical significance. Right now, this collection has many items that may be just considered antiques. As a county, we would have kind of, we'd have to put priorities on that. What size should this collection really be? And that gives us some time based, based on budgetary capacity, we'd be able to go through this and continue that work. But right now, we, we believe that there are certain excesses to how big this collection is. We would not literally get rid of all the items. We would be able to literally scale it to the county priorities.
You used some examples when we were meeting in our briefing that might be helpful, like the, how many, how many toasters?
Yes.
Do you need? And maybe if it was the first toaster ever made and it was in Washington County, that might have significance or significant significance. Or if it was like the first toaster in Oregon or whatever, but like 20 toasters from, you know, seven different generations? Maybe not so much. Is that kind of the?
Exactly. Same thing with the phone collection.
Phone collection.
So, so what I got, one of the things I got out of that was on art, on your line here, artifacts. You, I think it's important to put in the slides, continue to reduce the collection to item with historical significance because the prior museum folks were already doing that. So it's in line with that. So in some ways, this option sounds to me like it buys us a little time so that we know more about what the artifacts are. But we are inside of that three years or we're inside of three years towards that June 30th, 2028 lease deadline. So I hear this, if PCC is interested in supporting this, this sounds like an option. But I feel like we're still left with needing to do some work on the inventory because at the end of the day, some of it's going to have to go somewhere. We already know that now. We know that because we don't have the capability to operate a museum and nobody else has stepped forward. But anyway, maybe I'm getting a little ahead of myself. I think I understand this option a little bit better. I'll, I'll, I'll stop there. And if anything that I've said is incorrect, please do correct me.
Thank you. Let's finish the options and then get to our questions.
Okay. Moving on to option number four. Option number four is the opposite of option number three. Option number four is private or community ownership and operations. The documents, we'd still have to determine based on if we've received proposals. Does Washington County retain those documents or would it go to the new owner operator? So it's a to be determined. The artifacts themselves, they would go to the new owner. The assumptions for this is the new owner operator would be privately owned, operated independently funded. We are estimating to run this museum, it's about a million to million and a half a year if it was properly funded. The proposal would have a service mix including items like exhibits, events, marketing, education, collaboration with other entities, perhaps products, concessions, those types of things. The county would be under no obligation for museum support or subsidy and free of any future encumbrance or liability. We envision the proposals would be due by the end of the calendar year, December 2025. And under optimal conditions, we'd like the transition to be the first quarter of 2026. So next slide.
The only thing I would add to this slide is that if we go through this process and we do not get viable options for private or community ownership, we would be back with your board looking at the other options. So I just wanted to make that clear.
It seems like we have to pick option, some other option in addition to option four.
Backup. Yep. All right. Do you want to move to the last slide here?
Okay. And this is repeated the question as far as which option does the board want to direct staff to pursue? And does your board need additional information to make a final decision?
Great. Thank you very much. I think at this point, I believe that everybody would like to discuss these, not just have the option that we choose. So who would like to go first?
I'll, I'll start with the option four, Marty. And I want to pick, I'm looking at you, Marty, because I want to pick up something you said. You said something about coming back to this board, even if we get something to come back and decide. So, so I just want to unpack that.
Yeah, I, I like Commissioner Snyder's suggestion that if the board wants us to pursue option four, that you might direct us on one of the other three options. If we're unsuccessful, what is the backup plan?
Option four independently.
So what I wanted to tease out was you're not currently doing an outreach to try to figure out this option. Or is there some conversation happening to try to put a feelers out?
We've had informal conversations when different organizations or advocates call and are concerned about the museum closing. We have had informal conversations and we've asked, you know, would you, would your organization be interested in taking this on? Or do you have ideas about who might be? And we have hit dead ends. So, but again, those are informal conversations. So we haven't put together, here's what we think it takes, make a proposal.
Do you anticipate informal versus formal will be different? Perhaps that might yield something or maybe not.
Not to be a pessimist, but no. Joe, you've had more direct conversations. Do you have a?
I have heard a lot of optimism in the community, but I have not seen anybody actually putting something together. But we haven't put it out there requesting proposals either.
Okay. And then option three, I'll just work backwards. If I follow the discussion correctly, this option will cost the county $200,000 per year annually. And then there's a one specialist.
Yes.
As well. But does that also include in the meantime? Because I think I didn't quite follow around the artifacts and the, the documents and the records and, and the two stand, the surplus, the two options before that. So are we picking one of those options and doing the imaging and research center to get to that $200,000? So we would first pick one of those options and then do an imaging. So what, how do we, so how do we, which standards then do we follow to handle the artifacts?
Options one and two are dissemination options.
Getting rid of the product.
Getting rid of.
Everything.
Yes. Option three is keeping them owned and operated by Washington County. Different concept altogether, independent. So what we're looking at with option three was it's an existing operation with Washington County, relocated to that building and then sort of mutually working with the museum and the artifacts, adding one employee to blend that. And then paper records stay intact, the artifacts stay intact with, with the ongoing plan for what those artifacts should look like in the future.
So that sounds too good.
Can I interrupt you for a sec? Because what is abundantly clear to me is these various options are really dealing with artifacts. And we need to be thinking about the documents and records separately because we have to maintain those per legal record retention standards. And as and option one, you know, option one's all about physical assets. Option two is about physical assets. Option three makes it sound like it's dealing with the documents, but it's not really. It's still focused on on continuing to work the physical assets, but having public availability to the documents and records. And option four is still, somebody else would be taking over and taking on all of the artifacts, but we still have a big open question on the documents and records. We may still have to retain those. So I think we've got to be a little clearer that we still have a big responsibility around the documents and records and be a bit clear on the physical asset handling. That's all.
That's a very good comment. The reason why we brought up the, the actual physical paper documents in option three was that is the option to where we don't have to pay for storage. We save money by not having to pay for storage. So that's a good comment. Thank you.
By keeping them onsite.
But only till June of 2028 so far.
I think that the, the idea of option three is that we would approach PCC and see if they are willing to continue and renew the lease beyond. If, if they were, if they are not willing to renew beyond that, then this option doesn't necessarily make sense either. Because it just kicks the can down the road a couple of years and then we're still left with the other options. But i- if your board is interested in this, our next step would be to have that conversation with PCC.
But I think option three slide needs to, it's clear, maintain onsite, no additional expense. But we still have a responsibility to maintain per legal retention standards. And I think it's important for that to be listed because if, if we go with option three and it continues for a while, we still have this burden of this unknown 1,000 square feet, I think it was, of, of documents and records that a future board's going to need to invest in. How do we go through this? How do we keep what needs to be kept? How do we transfer what needs to be transferred? Or what have you? But it's still a responsibility. That's all.
Hey, Commissioner Snyder.
I, uh, I just want to say at the outset, I don't love any of the options. I think option four, of course, if money were not an object or a barrier, would be the most desirable. But we're literally in this place now because that was a barrier to the prior operator. And I don't know what changes about that fundamentally unless a very wealthy benefactor comes and endows the operations of this, you know, organization indefinitely, which I don't think would cost that much to do. Someone might maybe be willing to do that in the long run. I don't think that gets put together before the end of the year. I don't know if it ever gets put together. I do think it makes sense from a public perspect, perspective to put out option four as of, as an option. But I think our, and, and maybe it doesn't have to be on the end of 2025 timeline. I, I want to think about probably an option three as our default position, assuming PCC can or is willing to move forward from that perspective, which I really hope as a partner that they would. With the idea that maybe someday, we don't, that doesn't prevent us from trying to in the longer run, make option four work again with both the right organization and operator and the financial backing to be confident that it's going to successfully operate for a long period of time. Again, I don't think that gets put together in a real way in 2025. I just don't think that's realistic. I do think it could be realistic in a longer term. And I think, I think of option three as a transitional. And I think, I think of option three as a transitional option to hopefully get to option four someday. I think option two is kind of gross from a, the way we're going to handle materials. I don't think many of these artifacts deserve that kind of handling. And so I'm very uncomfortable with that from just a what feels right. It doesn't, it doesn't feel right to me. And if, and I don't think option one, at least it takes care of things in a, in a better manner. But I don't think it achieves a very good result. Those are my thoughts.
Mr. Willie?
Yeah, I, I would agree. I'll start backwards from where you ended up, Jason. I don't like one and two at all. Just because I feel like we are, we are dismissing our history. And that was the purpose of this facility was recognize Washington County history and artifacts. I'm not a big fan of three. So that gets us to four, but I was in my own mind considering a four B, but maybe we do four. But so I have a couple of questions on four. What is it costing us right now today? The whatever we're doing. I mean, we've got somebody out there checking just to make sure the temperature is running and the lights are on. And what's it costing us today?
That's two parts to that. The, the facility right now, cash flow, we're looking at about 25,000 to 35,000 for facility right now, because PCC gives us the facility for $1 per year. So now it's just electricity and some of the basic utilities. We also have a temporary part-time employee out there. So I think right now, I think we'll be, and we'd like to actually move that part-time employee to full-time employee just to get some of this, the ball rolling on this. So if we're saying, what would it cost us per year? That would be the 200,000 per year cash flow, but we'd have to add the cost allocation plans to that.
And what does that attempt person do right now?
Right now, they're actually doing a lot of things that are. I had a list and you asked, just right when I can't think of all the different things, but they, they gave me a full page of list of all the things that they are working right now and trying to get through. But it, it's all has to do with maintaining the, the collection and working through the records and getting things ready for the next steps.
Thank you. Mr. Willie, I don't think you're finished.
I wasn't. Under the assumptions on number four here, they say, you say that estimated cost independently funded is a million to a million five. That is two to three times more than the last two years budgets were this. So why is it, why are we saying it's a million or a million five? But I pulled up the 990s, which has income and expense on, on the 990s and it's somewhere around $500,000 a year. The budget that I received had 600,000 a year and we knew that that wasn't working. We knew it was on a shoestring budget. It wasn't working. They didn't have enough for actually running it as an optimal operation with the, the, the marketing that they could use or the exhibits or the collaboration with other entities, other museums around the country or locally. There were not running or set up for products or concessions. There's just a lot of different things that they could do if they were to run this as an optimal operation. I see. So right now, this, the five to 600,000 a year was just maintaining status quo, which obviously was a slow death.
Yeah, we knew that that wasn't working. You could see that it did not work.
Okay, I would agree with that. I don't think there's any way we can meet the deadline for proposals by 2025, by December. This is going to take some work and that's the reason why I ask how much money we're investing now. Because to really consider to reconstitute the museum is going to take us a year, probably or more. So are we willing to invest that? Doesn't sound like we really have too many options because we can't just lock it up and walk away. So that's what I'm, I'm considering that we are looking at. It's going to cost us a couple hundred thousand dollars for the next year. But I'd like us to actually put together or consider somebody putting together a plan to outsource this facility. To, because to keep it, I guess, as a viable county asset. And I don't, I don't think we're, I don't think we've done option four in depth enough to really to make that a viable option. So I'd like us to put a little bit more meat on the bone here, give a little bit more clarity and see what it is out there because we're, we've, we've got something that it's going to cost us a couple hundred thousand dollars a year until we figure something else out.
So one thing I want to add is right, right now, we have a budget of, I think it's approximately 180,000, which would cover the costs of the temporary staff. We have been told that the cap amount is an additional 300,000. So I just want to be transparent that if we brought back a budget for the following year, it would include, it would need to include the cap, which is mostly facility costs.
And that's 480,000.
It would be, yeah, roughly 400,000.
You're going to have to, you're going to have to give me a lot more detail to that because I understand what a cap is.
Yes.
Cost allocation.
Yes.
Okay, and it, the facility is ours to maintain. So does the facility need additional expenditures to upgrade it, to fix it? Is it deferred maintenance on that?
We, and we can bring, we can bring that back, but that's the estimate that we receive from facilities.
But Jerry, they're talking about all the cost allocation. They're talking about HR, finance.
ITS.
Yeah, but I don't understand why it would be 300,000 dollars when we got one person.
Most of that is, is facility costs. So it is some deferred maintenance. It's the upkeep. I, I mean, I can get you more information. I, I'm Laurel. Has provided us with that estimate.
Okay, I'd like to see that because that, that's mind boggling to me that we're spending 180,000 dollars to keep the door open, but our internal cost is 300. That makes no sense unless the building's ready to fall down.
I mean, many of those 300,000 dollars are costs we would already have. Right? Like they'd be cost allocated differently. Like, we're not going to hire a new HR person in the county because of this. Facility. We're not going to hire new finance staff because of this.
Well, and we're not going to be able to source it to some private company or a group if it has a bunch of deferred maintenance on it. So.
I understand that part.
And the building is owned by PCC, but we would be responsible for the upkeep and maintenance. And I'm just sharing what we've been told that the cost allocation, because I'm just trying to be transparent about full costs.
Okay, anything else? I have some comments.
What is your four B? What is your four B option?
Four B is we gotta, we gotta clean up four A.
Make it in the timeline.
Make something that to me is feasible and the 300,000 dollar cost allocation has to be one of them. Because we've, we've been handed a little bit of, well, a lot of the liability. And so now we're trying to figure out how do we how do we respond to our history versus how do we maintain a building, it sounds like. So.
Don't you view option three as a, as a better transitional option than, no?
Yeah, I kind of view three as we're, we're just marching in place. Because what, what do we look like a year from now? What do we look like in two years from now? We've got part of Joe's staff out there on the imaging side of things, but have we really accomplished moving this forward?
So I'd like to make some comments. And those are, first of all, I really appreciate hearing from everybody. Their, their perspectives, you know, they're different, but I think we all agree, we've got the same difficult situation to manage through and we've got to figure out the best way to get there. Option three to me looks a little different than it did to me in, in the briefing. And that is that option three also provides for a culling, if you will, of the artifacts, not of the documents. Those are mandatory. But the, the artifacts themselves, the extra phones, the extra toasters, the extra whatever we may have. So that culling process leads to a more opportune time to look at option four in my mind. So that I, I can't imagine somebody coming in and being able to go through all that we have stored there. And that's, that's part of my thought here. I too like option four. One of the reasons I think that I am pushing for that ultimately is to answer what the public has been saying to us about the value of these, of this museum, what they think is appropriate to keep and to allow the process to move forward to see if there is that option. But in, I don't like option one and I don't like, like option two. I would move to option three to allow that start of a transition toward another option if it becomes feasible. And I think that's the real critical part here is the feasibility from an RFP standpoint, if we were to put something out there after we, after we did call through a lot of this, these artifacts, because 19,000 square feet is a lot.
Someone's going to have to not only be able to respond to the RFP, but have the financial resources to make option four happen. That's a much.
I, I don't, I do not disagree, but I would, I would not recommend going forward without having that option in the public space.
Oh, I completely agree.
Okay, so the feasibility of it happening, I, no guarantees. But the requirement from my perspective to do it is important. Chair, go ahead.
Thank you. I asked clarifying question on each option as we are going on, but I didn't make final comments on all of these options. So where I'm at is as, and I've learned a lot from this discussion, so thank you. We've been handed a li, a liability in the form of the documents and we're going to have to make an additional investment. So that's like here in a box, it's still an unknown, right? An unknown process. We also have a liability that no one has achieved an inventory or completed an inventory of all the artifacts and that needs to be done. I, unlike Commissioner Treese, I no longer believe that option three is going to complete the artifact inventory. Because I think where this discussion is leading is, is to a different point. So hear me out. Let me just finish some more. To the point that of honoring our history and that the pub, honoring the public input and what they've been saying. The fact of the matter is, the public has not loved the museum enough for it to be sustainable. That is a recognized problem. This closure has brought forth some interest and maybe it is a measurable interest or a quantif, quantifiable interest. But here's where I think we're leading. I would like to suggest that we have an option four that is put the museum, as you say, an option four, out, out to bid, so to speak. But instead of saying the deadline for proposals is essentially four months away, I think we, I mean, that is a lot, but folks might appreciate having six months. And then process those so that we're leading towards, we have to make a commitment for the next proposed budget of what are we going to do? And I think we're going to need to do some further work as a board on that. You know, Commissioner Willie, you've asked some very good questions, for example. But I think this liability of the documents is important for us to learn more about. Because these options don't deal with that, right? One of them has stasis mode for that, but it doesn't deal with it. And that's the real problem. We have this liability that no one has inventoried the documents and records. We have the liability that no one has completely inventoried the artifacts. So it makes it hard to decide between these options, like option one and two. But they may still be very viable options for us to continue. And we may have to have a mix. For example, while doing the work on an option one or an option two, continuing to have the additional support that an option three would. All of that being said, after an option four, in air quotes, or a four B is dealt with. So this is hard stuff. I'm being the, the bad cop of reminding us as a full board that we don't have the budget room for all this. We've put a Band-Aid on it for this fiscal year to try and stop the bleeding, but we have to make choices and none of them are good choices, as our staff has told us. But I also don't think we have enough to get our head around. I don't think we're going to be able to move forward on any of the prior options without completing an option four. The informal information, I've heard it loud and clear and I appreciate the network that our staff have put out there and have been meeting with. Informally, there is no one to take this on in a sustainable fashion. And I think that's part of what we have to put, put out, that it isn't just someone who can raise 1.5 million dollars, for example, for one year. They have to demonstrate sustainability, which goes to Commissioner Snyder's point on an endowment versus just a one-time donation. So anyway, those are my thoughts that I'm, like it or not. I just don't think there's enough clarity for me to make a decision today and that I do think we're going to have to put out the formal option four and seriously consider doing an option three while an option one or two is done in parallel. Those are my thoughts.
I just view option three like as a default position. Financially, it costs similar annual operations. We, I view the public and us as a county getting more out of that option in the short to medium term. And my, my, my other comment about that is I think we're going to be in this medium term longer than we think we're going to be. And so that, that's partly why I'm making the suggestion I'm making. It provides access. I think it's the most affordable and provides access in, like, I think it's the best value for what we need to do in the short run.
Which may be, but I, if we could go back to that slide, I think we have a problem that continuing to reduce the collection to items with historical significance. I think no matter what formal course we take on, to be clear with our community, I think a whole bunch of the interested public are going to go in and swamp that poor one museum specialist to keep going back and pulling more information because people are going to want to see. because people are going to want to see it, so that they're prepared for whatever we do with an option one or two, for example. So I'm not so sure that there's going to be anyone, any any time left to actually achieve reducing or culling the collection.
So you're not even sure three, as it's presented, is really sustainable itself, is what I'm hearing, Chair?
Yeah, I think the first year is going to be really busy, and then it's going to wane down and level level off to what the current museum or the prior museum, the Five Oaks Museum was, and it's not sustainable. I have I have a question for Marnie and for I know Joe, I know I was going to call you Mr. Nelson, and then I was going to call you Joe, and sorry. I have a question for the two of you, and that is when I look at these four options, the only one that would allow for other activity in the meanwhile is three. And it seems to me that no matter where we are, we need to have, we need to buy ourselves some time. Three would allow us to buy some time while we identify things like cap costs, while we identify things like the probability of an RFP. It allows us to use that that space efficiently for another purpose during during that time period. We name and to the chair's point, we may not be able to get to the other list of things, but allows us to gain more information to go through the remaining three options and and really assess where our future lies here. So my recommendation, it would be to go with option three while while we gain information and we can determine what our our next steps are. That also gives us time to talk with our public about what we're doing and to provide the access in the meantime so that they can get information and exposure to what.
Do you agree we have to offer option four at some point?
Absolutely.
Community? Okay, then I'm supportive of.
Yeah, absolutely. But I'm I'm thinking that it's without option three, we can't jump to any of the other options without without a loss.
To the chair's point about option three and being overwhelmed with like, you all may need to think about operationally how you want to make that happen with a one FTE. I mean, it may be that there's only twenty hours a week that they're available to bring stuff out and allow inspection, and they're spending the other half of their time doing the work that needs to be done. I don't know what that looks like. I'm confident you all can figure that out. But I do think the bandwidth issue in the in the short term is a real is a real issue, and access may not look like free any moment you want, just pop in.
Exactly.
You know, look at thirty artifacts. I'm guessing that's not going to be workable. So you all may have to think about that.
Have we also looked at any volunteer capacity to address the, you know, shortfalls along the way? So I'd ask that we we assess that opportunity as well.
Certainly. Thank you. We've only got two of us that are, I think, have given thoughts on the three, the three, four.
Well, at least you get we get something for three, like you said. So it's rather than we're spending two hundred anyway.
Right, that that's partly my point.
Yeah, let's let's get something for it with option three with the anticipation that this is not permanent.
No.
We're going to move ahead. I'm still concerned about that annually cap thing, so need more information.
We'll definitely bring that back.
Commissioner Fai? I don't believe it, but I don't thumbs up on what he said.
On on option three, moving towards four.
Yeah, more information about the cap. And then I'm, I'll be honest, I I think I see option four and 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 three happening at the same time, since we're spending two hundred, not to repeat some points that Ben mentioned. So I I sort of see option three and four happening at the same time while we are in conversation with the community to try to find and really do like a little bit of a concentrated effort to have robust conversation that is strategic around, hey, do you want this? While also doing option three in the meantime, because.
I mean, that RFP may have to be put out three or four times.
Yeah, exactly. So yeah, so I think these this I see the two, even though it's three and four, happening, they're just three, three.
Wait a second. Hold on.
I can see that.
Back on option four, doing that three or four times. No, I think putting it out there for six months, that's it. We don't have, I'm playing the bad guy here, folks. We don't have the budget for this. We're going to have a cuts budget ahead of us for proposed FY twenty seven.
I guess I'm just not looking at it so black and white in that if we've already chosen three as our sort of stasis point, and we want to hopefully unload the responsibility and get it back to museum over time, you know, there may be a six-month RFP that goes out soonish for option four, Chair. What we don't get either any bidders or we are responsive proposals, or we get one or two that have no sustainable financial plan. This is what I'm envisioning happening likely.
Yes.
In real life. And then a year later, we might say, huh, maybe there's a maybe we need to put it out again while we're still in the stasis operation or option three world with the hope that maybe now the the financial conditions are right, the people are right, and someone comes back with a responsive proposal a year and a half from now that didn't come forward the last time, or one of the groups that did now has a sustainable funding plan. That's what I'm, that's how I'm envisioning this happening in the real world. I don't I don't think we just throw it out there and then conclude at the end of an unsuccessful RFP process that this will forever be option three in Washington County in memoriam. Like, I just don't, I don't view it that rigidly, but I'm just one commissioner.
Well, I think we have to bite the bullet. The Washington County Museum was under financial discomfort for quite a while, and that was before COVID. And then, as constituted as Five Oaks, has been further on an unsustainable path. So I I'm concerned for future boards, I'm concerned for this board right now, that we're suffering from the weight of underfunding or no funding for mandated services that a county government does. A county government is not in the business of running a history museum. And that's why I think we've got to put out a timeframe by which we're moving forward with a six-month RFP for option four, investing in option three in parallel to that. But during, you know, either with proposed fiscal year twenty seven, we're going to have to sort out options one, two, or three, and that's only for the artifacts. We still have a big problem on records, documents and records, big liability. So I think we're going to have to come back to answers to the question and a proposal for next steps.
And you've got a plan for the record.
Vice Chair, may I?
Yes, please.
Suggest that we come back with option three and four and what those would look like? Because as I'm listening to you, if you're thinking about option three as a short-term option as as we move towards an option four, it may not make sense to move the imaging center out there if we're only going to be out there for, you know, one or two or three years and then move back. So if we can just, based on what we're hearing in this conversation, come back to you with some of the answers to what three and four might look like or a transition from three to four.
Thank you. I agree. But I also have a problem with what I heard Commissioner Snyder say. We don't have a plan for the documents and records. All we have is a legal responsibility.
Maybe I misunderstood the briefing.
So with the documents and records, that is our bread and butter. So we haven't, we haven't talked about it as much.
To deal with it.
We 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 do have a, we do have a budget, and we receive records every year. And my understanding from Joe that the the volume of records isn't something that that's not the part we're losing sleep over. So I I feel like we do have a plan because we we know how to receive and work through records.
I have not heard a plan for how we're taking on another one thousand cubic feet of records at this time and how to figure out what is inventoried so that we know how to deal with it. All the other document stuff, it fits within the categories of documents and records that we already handle as a county government. We still don't know what all these documents and records are. And that's why I keep using the word inventory, inventory, inventory.
And we can be more specific about that. If your board would like us to bring those two sort of molded options together.
I believe that that is what you're hearing. I would also like you to, as you look at moving the imaging center in this arena, you still only have that through the agreement of the of year twenty eight. So no matter what, you don't know what that what the future is going to be after then. So I think we have to build that into your look at moving.
Isn't it time to add, start the discussion with PCC, though, at this point, before you're coming back?
And I was going to add to to my point here is that if that location is a good location at a reasonable cost for a service that we are that we do provide, we should be considering that in our facilities plan moving forward if it's agreeable with PCC as well. So that's that's the other piece I would add to that. So are we in agreement moving forward that we're getting more information back on option three and four with a look to the future in in several different regards, including the imaging center? You okay with that? Thumbs up, thumbs up, thumbs up. Catherine, okay, good. He can take a break.
How about that?
Thank you very much. Let's take a break and reconvene here at ten minutes to four o'clock. And we will start when we get back with the review of our formal agenda and our board updates. And then after that, move into executive session.
Got that done in seventy minutes. That was pretty good. The museum.
That we do with this.
Seventy minutes. I mean, we're scheduled for sixty, but I think.
Mics are on. [audio cuts out] 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 [audio cuts out]
All right, welcome back, Commissioners, Chair Harrington, are you back with us as well?
Yes, indeed.
Great. Well, we are reconvening after our break and we will be covering our Board and Leadership Communication and our formal agenda item discussion and then moving into executive session. I'd like to switch the order and start with the formal agenda item discussion. We've had some changes to the agenda. I want to make sure that we're all aware of that and see if there's any other issues that you have with the agenda. We are going to be, we have moved item three from the consent agenda to the action item portion of the agenda and put on top of that a public comment section. So that is, that will be the plan for, and this, let me tell you that this is the, it's road, would you come to this table, Stephen? This is the road closure and this is a significant length of time. So we decided, and we've got quite a bit of public input that's come in regarding that. And we are also, I'm just becoming aware of overlap between Clean Water Services work, our work, and it was appropriate to have a time when we got an update from the staff as well. So Stephen.
Okay, great, thank you Commissioner and Board members. Stephen Roberts, Land use and Transportation Director, and I want to acknowledge Rick Chanley, obviously, from Clean Water Services. So feel free to add anything to this, but we have been approached by a developer that is requesting a fairly lengthy closure of River Road. This isn't unheard of. This has happened several times in the past, both for county capital projects and for private development projects where we've had to basically deal with some fairly lengthy road closures. We have a number of development projects that just simply require so significant an amount of work in a confined space that we really don't have an option other than to close the road. We don't bring these proposals forward lightly and so we've given quite a lot of consideration to this request and we're bringing it forward to you with the hopes that the total duration that's been proposed, five and a half months approximately, is a kind of reasonable worst case scenario for the closure duration. There's anticipation that the developer and the construction team may be able to move more quickly. However, we don't want to advertise a potentially shorter closure and then find that it needs to be extended in the future because I've been through that and that is far more painful than just approving a longer closure and potentially opening the road a bit earlier. So perhaps just in terms of run of show, really quickly, our expectation tonight, we'll have a brief staff report. I'll ask Stacy Scheller, our county engineer, to do just a few slides about road closure authorities and the county's perspective on this issue, staff's perspective. And then we have a representative from the developer will be here tonight as well and he'll have a few slides to show a little bit more detail about some of the whys behind the proposal. And hopefully that will help folks, both commissioners and members of the public, to better understand the why here. And then obviously you all can ask us questions and then we'll have the public comment period and then we'll ask your board to deliberate on the requested closure.
Great. Chair Harrington, your hand is up.
Thank you, because I had a few questions, but first I want to say that I likely will not be able to attend tonight's meeting. So thank you to the four of you for handling the agenda. With regard to the staff report and the slides and some phraseology that I've heard about, we have, I would like to suggest that there be clarification, both delivered verbally but with visual aids to support. It's my understanding, having read the material, that this construction is within the city of Portland with the Witch Hazel.
Hillsborough.
Thank you. Within the city of Hillsborough, within the Witch Hazel Village South subdivision. So this is a development within a city that impacts a county road, right? Those are the facts. I don't dispute those facts, but I think we need, it's responsible upon, it's incumbent upon the county to present it with that clarity, right? Because the development is not with Washington County, if I am correct. But being the steward of these roads of county significance, we have a responsibility. And I say that because I've also been reading the various constituent communications and I appreciate that folks have been inconvenienced with regard to the rotary construction that was way further down the road. And so I think it might also help to have a map that shows the proximity of this, how far away the rotary is, and to remind folks if they're trying to get to or out of that area around the new development, that they can go around and there are some parallel routes over here that aren't that far away. It's, yeah, it's a change of direction, but at the end of the day, none of us is an island and we all have to accept that this is part of what it means to live in a state that has urban growth boundaries and our cities are trying, and all the service providers are trying to do the right things. So anyway, my question was really about the staff report and making sure that there were more visuals in there that would be clear, that's all.
Okay, yeah, thank you Chair. We're actually, just in the other room here, the applicant and Stacy are talking right now, trying to finalize their presentation materials. So I'll take that feedback right back to them.
Are there any other comments or questions? Rick, did you want to share anything from Clean Water Services?
A few points of clarity, that the closure itself, as I understand it, is for the deep sewer gravity pipe, which is the city of Hillsborough. And once that's completed, there will be a partial closure. And what Clean Water Services is looking to do is be coordinated with that part in time when we're doing the force main for a pump station that we're planning to do anyway, it's in our CIP. So we're trying to avoid multiple impacts. And if that period of time gets shortened, that's okay with us because we don't need that full closure for the force.
Okay. Well, I guess that was my question when I was reading this. I've never heard of a sewer line being 34 feet underground, but is it going to take five and a half months to dig that trench and lay that pipe? Because that's what the, that's what the primary focus of the road closure is. Because they can't do it with traffic going one way, whatever, but.
Right. My understanding, and this might be a good question for the applicant's representative when we get to the hearing tonight, but they also have other utilities that need to be constructed. And in particular, the most physically constrained area is in the, is area that's already developed on both sides of River Road in the city. So you've got subdivisions on both sides of the street there and just a really confined work area. And the placement of this really deep sewer pipe requires digging a very wide trench right in the middle of the road. Unfortunately, because you're working right in the middle of the road, the equipment and the swing of the giant backhoe and the need to have a steady flow of dump trucks in and out of the site really use up every inch of the available paving. And so it really just isn't possible to continue to try, have traffic running through that part of the work zone. And that's the most constrained portion and it is very slow going when you're dealing with trench that deep. You have to work in sort of shortcuts and you've got a lot of digging down. There's a lot of shoring work that has to happen to protect the workers and keep the trench from collapsing. And because this is so close to the Talboton River, the water table in this area is relatively high. So there's going to be constant pumping that's required to keep the trench from filling back up again. And so one of the drivers behind the timing of the request and the urgency of getting started soon is that this is the, essentially the low point of the water table for the year, for the water year. And so this is the best time to dig that deep.
Rick mentioned that Hillsborough, is Hillsborough the applicant for the sewer line or is, no?
No, it's a private developer is being required to install the line.
That would then be owned by Hillsborough.
Managed by the city of Hillsborough.
Once it's done.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I, and we'll make this clear in our briefing tonight too, but this pipe is a bit of a down payment. So there's a relatively smallish subdivision that's being constructed right now that's dictating the need for this. But the work that's being done now is going to serve all of the rest of the current urban expansion area in what's called the Witch Hazel Village South area, as well as areas that are currently future urban, or that are designated urban reserves, so rural now, but will potentially be urban in the future. So it's going to serve a much larger area. So this, this one impact will provide the benefits, not just for this initial phase of development, but for a much larger area.
Investment in the future.
Correct, yeah. So again, we understand the impact. We completely sympathize. This is actually part of my commute route. So I'll be looking at my other options as well. So, but this too shall pass.
Thank you, Stephen. Anything else? Any other questions?
I do have a, I think Stephen, I had a quick check-in, I feel like with you, but I bought this. But two things I think I didn't mention is the map that is currently published in the works of materials with the agenda. I did get a question that was asking if this is a draft map.
It should be fairly, well, actually, just a little while ago, we sent, I sent an updated version to Clark Moss to update. So it's the same map, the actual construction zone is slightly shorter in the updated map. That's the only change that was made to it, but otherwise the map is accurate.
Okay. And then the other question or sort of a comment or feedback I got was usually road closures are highly publicized on the county's road closure website or page. And one of the things that I've heard from constituents was it was not posted there. So would this information be added after the board takes an action?
Yes, yeah.
And that's the normal process of cadence of how things get added. So it's contingent to board action, then it will be published.
Exactly.
And then in terms of the city of Hillsborough and their role in this, and the conditions they could apply, what step should have happened in this if this was coordinated between, so should the decision between the county come after Hillsborough set their conditions and requirements? Then the Board of Commissioners take a decision? Or like, I'm just trying to figure out if Hillsborough hasn't clearly declared or the Transportation Committee, is what I've heard, they haven't met, they have a meeting scheduled today.
Right.
So what, which decision should have happened to best serve constituents that the city of Hillsborough and Washington County is trying to serve?
Yeah, that's a great question. And since we talked earlier today, I was able to reach out to Hillsborough staff and confirm that their Transportation Committee does not have to act on this item. They're receiving questions about it as well and so they want some information to be prepared to answer questions that they anticipate they'll have from their officials on that committee. And so the applicant has shared the same material that you'll be seeing tonight with the city of Hillsborough. And then in terms of the status of other approvals that are needed from the city, the engineering plans that include this sewer line work are very close to final approval. Not 100% yet, but there are always some final last minute pieces of paperwork and other permits that need to be provided before the city issues its permit. So I checked in with the engineering manager at the city earlier today, their Assistant Director of Public Works, and she assures me that they're very close to final approval and that they're trickling in the last few pieces of information needed to make that happen. So because of the, back to the water table issue, the developers trying to move this as expeditiously as possible. So assuming that your board may approve the closure tonight, there's a requirement for a minimum 14 days notice of the closure. That includes signs out on the roadway is actually saying it's going to be closed from this date to that date. And then the contractors will be installing detour signs at the same time that's happening. So that when the detour goes in effect, those signs all get unwrapped and people can follow those signed detour routes. So the applicant is trying to run these multiple processes in parallel, essentially. But at the end of the day, all the approvals have to line up before they actually start the work.
Okay.
That makes sense. So they're on track to have everything done in time to start the closure two weeks from tomorrow.
Okay, but these decisions are independent of each other.
Correct, right, coordinated but independent.
Independent, thank you.
Thank, yeah, that's a great question, thank you.
All right, any other questions? I want to take a moment and thank Stephen for really working quickly to make sure that this, that we got this pulled from the consent agenda. You know, Stephen and I talked on Sunday and he'd already received several, several phone calls and emails. So I just want to express my appreciation and I'm sure everybody else agrees that it's, you may, you're making this a lot better for our community at this point. So thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, are there any other comments about the formal agenda? Anything that we need to address? Alrighty, let's start with updates, your leadership updates. And Alex, I'm looking at you.
All right. Well, Vice Chair and Chair Commissioners, just a really short update for you today, given all the things we have to do. County Council continues to focus hard on our hiring actions behind our vacant positions, specifically two open paralegal positions and two returning positions. We recently interviewed a strong group of paralegal candidates and are in the process of making a tentative offer to one who we think will be a really great addition to our office. In the meantime, the attorneys and paralegals within the County Council's office continue to do their work and in many cases, more than their own work and with their typical commitment to high standards and with a real sense of teamwork. So I just want to give a big shout out to all the folks in the County Council's office, County Council's office for all the work that they're doing every day for the county. I look forward to keeping your board up to date as we continue to build the team down in the County Council's office. It's a really exciting time for us. That's all I have for today.
Aaron.
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington, Vice Chair Threes and Commissioners. I just have one short update for you and it's just to note that Washington County activated our inclement weather program this weekend. It started Sunday morning at 11:00 a.m. and it went through Monday evening at 7:00 p.m. And this was the period of time that was forecasted to meet the heat index threshold. And although the temperatures declined more rapidly than expected, the staff and providers continued forward with activation as communicated to the public. There were about 60 individuals served during the event at the two different sites, including Blanton Street, which is a county building often used for inclement weather shelter capacity. And notably, Just Compassion activated their Tiger Campus using their new access center, our first in the county. Going forward, as new access centers come online in our system, adding a site in Cornelius, Hillsborough, and hopefully Beaverton, these center, day centers will be our permanent locations for pop-up shelter capacity during inclement weather events. In addition to the additional shelter capacity, county staff and partners worked with cooling centers like the libraries, which stayed open until 9:00 p.m. on Sunday and Monday evenings. Also, emergency management hosted four days of multi-agency coordinating calls during this event, supporting the cooling centers and public information using all of the county's safe harbor languages about how to stay cool during the heat wave. Data from the emergency medical system shows visits to hospital emergency departments were about average for this time of year, which is an indicator of our success. I want to call out all the great work by the staff during the latest heat response.
Thank you, Aaron. Rick?
Good afternoon, CWS Board of Directors. As you know, the district is looking to expand our recycled water program as a key tool to meeting our thermal compliance regulations. And one of the key steps in developing this is a recycled water master plan. The last time we had a recycled water master plan was in 2004. So last week, I met with our key staff on the recycled water master plan we're working on. And I just wanted to share that the progress is great and we're making good strides. And I did mention in my weekly roundup, there's a very unique and innovative tool that they developed to allow us to compare the different projects based upon economic and non-economic criteria. So I look forward to coming back to the board with this plan as it's further developed. I also wanted to mention, as part of the overall recycled water look, we're doing a separate study to look at recycled water out of Forest Grove. The district owns approximately 800 acres of property there. And so as an early step, we're excited at the opportunity to provide recycled water onto that land. Ultimately, all of this is going to come together in a thermal compliance plan that will help us look at recycled water versus a host of other things that we can do for compliance. Related to thermal issues are the heat wave measures that we've been dealing with real time over the weekend, starting last week. So we're definitely experiencing the need to take some time and acknowledge our staff. They work in all conditions 24/7. And with our changing climate, we're getting more and more of these very hot days that require our team to be adept. They look at doing more strenuous work early in the morning. We require certain types of breaks and frequencies depending on how the weather is going. I just wanted to thank our team for being diligent and dealing with these situations under some pretty extreme and tough conditions.
I think all of us join in on that. Thank you. So that's great. Alrighty.
Thanks.
Here. Jerry just leaned over and said, have the chair go first.
Great, thank you, particularly since mine is short. So I missed the board work session last Tuesday, so I wasn't able to report on some prior meetings. I had a nice in-person update with Senator Lisa Reynolds. And I had Carly from our staff join that meeting. And so we were able to talk about the transportation bill. But I made sure to let her know that with all of the underfunding and unfunded mandates, that they're just, what the state legislature is doing is just killing us. So she knows it's really hard for us. This week, I have very limited meetings per doctor's orders. But I did attend a first initiation meeting on a new project. As you all may know, July, or next year is our country's 250th anniversary. And I know at least three of us were able to participate in the 200th anniversary of our nation in 1976. But as I was reminded through the gentleman from Washington County, Arkansas, that pulled us all together, he was not born in, prior to 1976. And nor does he think he's going to live for the 300th celebration. So this one is a biggie for his generation, which was really good to highlight. So there are 31 Washington counties across the United States. He invited all of them to this first ever coordination meeting. 16 responded positively and 12 were actually able to participate in this first ever meeting. So I will be, as you know, we don't have staff bandwidth or budget on this. So I'm currently scoping this out with my bandwidth and support from, excuse me, Gray Starpac. So there are some communities, particularly those on the East Coast, that were part of the, you know, the site of the American Revolution and different battles during our War of Independence. So they have a lot more going on, particularly in the state of Maryland and Washington County, Maryland. So there were different ideas that were shared in various communities to celebrate all over the course of the year of 2026. As far as next steps go, we will be reconvening and in the interim, I'm going to be syncing up with Dave Perullo to see what, if anything, may be going on throughout Washington County, but more specifically with Travel Oregon. So I will report back in the future with you on that. So, but mark your calendars, July 4th, 2026. At a minimum, maybe we should think about having a Washington County entry into the Hillsborough parade. So I'll follow up with them too. Thank you.
Chair, if I can help at all with the Explore Twelton Valley part of that, let me know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And again, I think I speak for everybody when I say, take care, take good care of yourself and get the rest that you need. That's really what's important. Okay, who would like to go next?
I'll go next. So as we have all been doing, library and public safety levy presentations, attending lots of city council meetings. So I was in Gaston last week with Lisa and of course, representatives from our Sheriff's Department. They're all doing a really great job and this is on top of their normal job. So this is taking a lot of time for them and we appreciate it. In Forest Grove twice yesterday, we made a presentation to the Forest Grove Cornelius Chamber, as well as last night at the Forest Grove City Council. Also, I received a request for a NACO Public Safety Survey email. And I, so I inquired and none of the rest of us, none of the rest of you got one. So I'm going to reach out and probably talk to Aaron about completing that. And the reason why I got it is because I'm NACO, I'm on NACO's Public Safety Committee. I don't participate in very many of their meetings except when I'm in DC. I attend them, but, so that's why I got that. So I just thought I'd let you know the work. I'm following up to find out what, what that would look like, what our responses would be. Commissioner Threes and I attended the Hillsborough Readiness Center groundbreaking event last week. Mayor Pace was there, Senator Solomon, of course. This is four National Guard units will be stationed here when, once this facility is completed. It's on 11 acres, large drill floor, administrative offices. It's going to be a very cool facility. This has been a long time coming because way back, and I might have been mayor, so it was 16 or prior, Washington County negotiated the swap of the land for the building on the fairgrounds, the armory that we have on the fairgrounds. So it's been a long time coming. So this has been, this is very cool. They're very excited to be here. Of course, we're going to be at the Beaverton City Council tonight. I've got a meeting tomorrow with Gaston City Councilor regarding a land title issue. I've had a coffee with North Plains City Councilor, Michelle McCall Wallace. And we've got ROMAC on Thursday and just a variety of other things. I'm going to be attending the Hillsborough Year Round Shelter for a tour with Congresswoman Bonamici and Mayor Pace for, and doing some quick talking points on that as well. And then I've decided to, for the state of the county, I chose Hag Lake. And so Sarah is working with me on talking points for that. We'll be taping that at Hag Lake on Friday.
Who's next? Thank you.
I can go.
Please.
Last Wednesday, we had a WA Board meeting and two topics from that that I want to make sure you, everyone's aware of. One is there actually now, I think I'd provided an update that they were raising concerns a number of months ago about the lack of industrial, like real buildable land, industrial land and the industrial land inventory. They have now actually started to get some traction with Metro and convened a meeting that Metro staff attended and they're just starting to have some, maybe the beginnings of progress there in a recognition that all the things they say are buildable for industrial land are probably not. So that was just like, just the. So that was just like, just the acknowledgement that there's a problem was a good step there. The other thing that the WA is working on is setting up a 501(c)(3) to support more educational efforts. And so the board actually provided direction and approved the moving forward of that. So just, you know, be aware of that. They'll be able to, it'll enable them to receive grant money and other things for certain activities that right now either just can't happen or they can't really receive grant money for.
And is that under the umbrella of WA, there'll be a 501(c)(3)?
It'll be a separate entity.
Right. But it's but it's managed by them.
They, yeah, there will end up being a, yep, a contract for
Probably will be a separate Board of Directors.
Yes.
What's one of the letters again? Did I hear it was a c4?
I think it's a 501(c)(3) to be educational.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Last Thursday, I met with a constituent about climate action and concerns there. Had my Five Oaks Museum briefing with Commissioner Phi. That was fascinating, and I think helped set us all up for a good conversation today. Saturday, there was the Legislative Town Hall in Tigerd, very informative and really robust attendance for for a state legislative town hall. I was impressed. It was standing room only in a fairly large room. Monday, and this is a little bit more follow up for Stephen Roberts. I did meet with a constituent who I think I referenced last week, had had some communication with Commissioner Rogers in the past, but there's some transportation issues in their area of kind of rural outside Sherwood. And so I went on site, looked at all that. And Stephen, what I missed mentioning to you in the hallway, and I don't want to forget, if there's a there's a stop sign issue we should talk about, so please help me not forget about that. Thursday of this week, I am going to be at CWS for some office hours and also meeting with an immigration advocacy group that has requested a meeting. Friday, I have a one-on-one with the chair. I'm, well, maybe I do. I, okay, I see the head shaking. I assume virtual. Okay. And then Friday evening, I have a meeting with a Hillsborough City Councilor who requested to meet with me about, quote, county issues. I don't know what that will bring, but be it's a very broad topic, but I will be meeting, meeting with them. So that's what I got.
Thank you. Mr. Phi, I'll go next. I I really enjoyed the Five Oaks Museum briefing I had with you. I really thought you asked a really good question, and it helped me understand the topic, especially where we were, where we landed today. So I appreciate that. In terms of staff, I had the opportunity last week to attend the Rock Creek for the NACO Peak Performance and Safety R and R Awards. So kudos to Clean Water Services and you did a great speech. And it was a great turnout and everybody was really proud. And and really was in a celebratory mode. So thank you for that invitation. The second highlight that I want to do is I attended the WA Superintendent today is the first day of a lot of Washington County schools. Back to school's day, we had one out of three. So two more to go to start our schools out of my three sons. So but I attended last week, the WA Superintendent Summit. It was a great opportunity to connect with our education leaders from across Washington County, and some of them, actually, I met them for the first time myself. It was a thoughtful conversation about how to continue to work together to support students, strengthen schools and prepare the next generation for success. I left that conversation encouraged by the shared commitment to collaborate between schools, local government and community partners. So it was both political and personal since my kids were in that, in the Beaverton Superintendent was there and my kids attend Beaverton School District. So that was really both political and personal, and I really appreciate it. The great work these superintendents are trying to do to try to collaborate and and they spoke highly of the students and their work. So congratulations to them. Thank you. And then the other highlights I want to do is, let's see, three minutes. I had a great meeting on a regional climate initiative. I met a staff person with Metro and the Regional Climate Initiative was aligning closely with counties' environmental stewardship priorities. So how do we have a regional discussion about this? And the project that Johannes shared with me was on building on a successful model from from Lane County. It sounds like Lane County was one of them, the model that was being referenced. In and the takeaway was in terms of that Climate Action Resource Navigator, community organizations and government partners with Washington County presented a co-designed that Climate Action Resource Navigator. The seeding justice is the host of the navigator model to keep community centered and sustainable. The pilot project is about two years with the goal of having a budget that is about $150,000 budget. Metro, Oregon Community Foundation, Port of Portland, and all of you have already contributed and made a commitment to, I think, out of that 300, they raised about 150. And then there were, from what I learned from that project, there were also additional contributions of 25,000 to 50,000 being sought to close. And the conversation was around could Washington County consider joining and contributing that? So I will, I got a lot of good information from Johannes with Metro. And I intend to share those documents with the board. And I'll be glad to bring back this if there's an interest in exploring what Washington County's role could look like. But that's it. That's my update on this. Let's see if I missed anything on the highlight.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll go last here. Commissioner Willie mentioned the Hillsborough Readiness Center groundbreaking event. It was, it was really, it was a very powerful event and it was hot, it was windy. But it was, it was very cool. And there was a lot of excitement generated there from the National Guard. On Saturday, I had the privilege of speaking at the 75th anniversary and the grand reopening of the West Slope Library. So that that's really a big deal for all of us. And it was, you know, the fact that we basically have through our budget process three years ago, identified a problem with our budgeting there, made sure that we could work through with the Garden Home Library, a new option moving forward and keep the very beloved West Slope Library. So I'm really pleased to be there. And there was a lot of cookies. There was a little child sitting outside. They were doing chalk painting and I could see he was eating like a brownie or something. And I said, how is that? And he looked up, his entire face was covered with chalk. Yeah, so I figured it was pretty good. Tonight, as Commissioner Willie mentioned, the two of us will be virtually attending the Beaverton City Council meeting for the Levy's present presentation. But I've made it really clear that we need to be gone and in our own meeting at 6:30. So we'll see how how the timing, how the timing works there. Most of tomorrow and Thursday, I'll be out of the office. I have family from across the country visiting, but I will be in attendance at tomorrow's grand reopening of the Bridge to Home Shelter, operated by Family Promise of Twelton Valley. And I will be sharing a few remarks there as Vice Chair. And I also have a check in coming up with the auditor and just want to remind everybody and say big call out to Carly, this Friday is the start of the state legislators' special session on transportation. I believe it was mentioned earlier. And in regard to the filming at Hag Lake, if you need any advice, I can tell you that I spent all day yesterday at Hag Lake with my 12-year-old and nine-year-old grandson, going from Skoggins Creek, fishing, hunting for crayfish, everything else, to swimming off the dock and then back to Skoggins Creek. And I can, I can let you know what's, what's, what's happening there. So need any advice? So with that, is there any other, anything else for the good of the order before we adjourn the work session? All right, before we adjourn, I'd like to ask for a motion to move into executive session. It's ORS 192.660 sub 2 sub H, and this is potential litigation.
I move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
We have a vote of four in favor, and the chair will be excused since she is virtual.
Thank you. Bye.